We'll have meeting come to order, Worthington City Council regular meeting, 5:30 PM, Monday, April 8th, 2024, City Hall Council chambers. And everybody stand for the pledge.
I'd like to lead this to the party of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everybody. We do have a addendum or a change order to the agenda. We need to add a G.
Three.
Dot three case item, approved task order 26 with Bolton and Mink to provide professional service for Third and Fourth Avenue construction supervision. Engineering case item is blue.
Would you approve the agenda with the additions?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto the consent agenda, we've got City Council minute, meeting minutes of March 25th, 2024, application for exemption from lawful gambling permit, King Turkey Day Incorporated, application for exemption from lawful gambling permit, King Turkey Day Incorporated, and bills payable.
Motion. Move to approve consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
All right. First case item is the second reading, the proposed ordinance. This is dealing with the parking changes that we discussed at the last meeting pursuant to the published notice. This is the time and date, but second reading, the proposed ordinance amendment, complete copy of the ordinance was provided in the March 25th council agenda. Council action is requested to give a second reading to the proposed ordinance.
Any response from public? Any input? Nothing?
No.
Move second reading.
Second.
We have a motion seconded for secondhand reading. Any, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, opposed, motion carried.
All right, next item is workforce housing development program grant application with C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated. Minnesota Housing Finance Agency established the workforce housing development program to assist in developing market rate residential rental properties to address the lack of workforce housing in greater Minnesota. Purpose of this program is to create new market rate residential rental properties. Deadline for the city to submit the grant request is April 30th. It's anticipated that grant awards will be announced in August of 2024. C.R. Lloyd Associates has requested that the city Worthington submit a request for a proposal to Minnesota Housing on behalf of their proposed market rate residential rental project that would be developed within the grounds of the Great Life Golf Course. The program funds shall not exceed 50% of the total development cost and require at least $1 of local matching funds for every $2 of program funding. Lloyd's project consists of a 47-unit apartment building with one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. Request for matching funds from Lloyd for this project includes the following: $1 million from the City of Worthington Economic Development Authority's spending plan that was created in December 2022 with unobligated tax increment District 7 funds and five-year property tax abatement with the city Nobles County and Independent School District 518. The total five-year tax abatement is estimated to be approximately $560,000 based on an estimated taxable market value of $8 million. Council's requested to support the workforce housing development program grant application, authorize execution of the workforce program certification form, and adopt the resolution certifying that the city is authorized to enter into an agreement with Minnesota Housing and will comply with all provisions of the grant. Luke Witgriff with C.R. Lloyd is here with us today and may want to speak on behalf of the project or answer any questions that council may have. Please come forward and sit up front here, Luke. Thank you. So anyway, just want to give a quick overview, hope I get the details correct.
Yep. Yeah, do I need to push a button or anything?
Let me make sure the mic is on.
Okay.
Is the red light on?
So as Steve said, we're looking to do a project on the Great Life Golf Course, 47 units, like Steve said. I do have a site plan that I've sent to Steve, so if anybody would like to see it, feel free to reach out to either me or him. Show it to you. The 47 units break down about 11% studios, 38% one-bed, 34% two-bed, 17% three-bed, so we do have a pretty solid mix there. We were sent a housing study that the city did. Our rents fall in line with what is recommended with those, along with our absorption schedule falls in line with the housing study. So with that, any questions you may have?
Chad.
In your housing, that's utilizing some of the things that we don't quite know yet with funding, correct?
I get, what do you mean?
In your performa, you know, to fall in line with making the project work with everything, are you, your workforce housing grant, some city contribution and things like that, those are all parts of it though, correct?
Yep, yeah.
So there's, there's multiple things that need to
Right.
happen to make all that.
Correct, yeah. For the feasible project that we show right now, we have the grant. We're requesting from the state 3.12 million, the matching dollars from you, the city, and then tax abatement, everything's in that financial model.
I just wanted to lay that all out.
Yep, yep, all of that is included right now.
Part of the whole mix in there.
Yep, correct.
And we have, we've had discussions about the tax abatement program in which the normal application is for five years, and we now are split off from the county and school district, so it would be two separate applications. State law allows tax abatement up to 15 years, so there is nothing that would prevent the applicants, developers, from requesting more than five years. They would have to go through the separate bodies to do that, but that is certainly a viable option that they can choose to pursue.
Any other questions? Yep, Elena.
If we do write this grant, then are we prevented from writing it on behalf of any other entities?
That's a good question. We, we've never encountered that. My guess is that multiple applications came from the same local entity that they would likely not award to two, two different projects, two different grant awards. But all the grant award, any, all the grant applications would be received at the same deadline, and there'll be a four- to five-month period in which they would evaluate them. So if
Does the workforce, Senator, do they grade or use their criteria, scale model, whatever, to say, these are the ones we'll choose based on, I mean, they decide that?
They would decide that completely, yeah. And I don't know what criteria they may use to, to judge one over the other. If one has more units, that might get more, more breadth within their evaluation, or you know, a lot of it's going to depend on how many applications are received and how much money is available within their program to distribute, and do they feel like granting as many awards as possible or granting fewer awards that accomplishes more housing units?
And the deadline for applications is when?
April 30th for the application to be submitted.
And have we heard of any others potentially coming before?
Yeah, we have one other entity that, at this point, has said that they anticipate submitting an application.
So then would we need to determine, I mean, if they came to request the same amount of, of support, would we need to deter, how much funds do we have available and would we need to determine just one, both, a fraction of, of support for both?
We
The money's available?
We have a little over $1 million remaining in that spending plan. The other entity has not requested, nor has the funds from that spending plan been offered.
Do they determine, do they have a deadline of when they say that they decide what they're going to award and when?
It's supposed to be in August. I'll leave it at that.
That's a huge gap.
Might not be a big enough gap.
Right, right.
Anyone else have anything? Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for keeping us up to date.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So we need council to make a decision on acting on the certification form and the resolution.
Separately?
You could do it together, as long as you specify.
I move to adopt that we go ahead with at least the application process and the matching, should it be awarded, for this project, and that's all we can really act on today. The certification form and then the resolution all in one.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The first item I have is the 24 private docks on public property. In accordance with the city policy adopted in 2013 regarding the issuance of permits for private docks to be located on public property, the city council shall annually first set the number of private docks allowed on public property. In 2023, council allowed all applicants permits on the condition that they met our dock policy. In 2023, the city issued eight permits for docks on public property. If the council decides to reduce the number of permits, all permit applications from existing permit holders will be reviewed by the council. And the second thing that the council shall do is set the annual permit fee. The 2023 fee was $200 per application, and we are proposing no change to the annual fee. It was last increased in 2022, and that $200 does cover our inspections, our labor, and our, our costs for inspections. Council action is, you, you also see a list of the 23 dock permit holders, and council action is requested to set the number of dock permission, permits issued for 2024 and the fee charged for each permit. We are down from 13 at a high a couple of years ago, down to eight now, so.
Didn't we, excuse me? Didn't we discuss that there's really, there's a finite amount that could go on here because it's
Yes.
People who
That meets, that meets the dock policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see a reason to limit it. I would move to set the number of dock permits per, per policy and the fee at $200 per dock.
Okay, we have a motion and we need a second.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
The second thing I have is a authorize for advertisement for bids. Worthington City Council at their February 22nd, 2024 meeting entered into an agreement with the firm of short Elliott Hendrickson Incorporated to do design work for replacements of the terminal building roof and heating unit at the Worthington Municipal Airport. Mr. Berkstrom of S E H has now completed the roofing plans and wood, like council's authorized acian to advertise for bids. The proposed timelines are as follows. April 8th, today, will authorize the bids. May 8th will be the bid opening, and May 13th council meeting will be a bid recommendation. Council action is requested to authorize staff to solicit bids for the airport terminal roof project. This will be partially funded by federal funds, state funds, and then local, some local funds.
I move to approve as presented.
Second. Okay, a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. Community development?
Engineering is here.
Engineering.
First item, award the contract for Third and Fourth Avenue Street reconstruction. Bids were open on Wednesday, March 27th, 2024, at 2:00 PM for Third and Fourth Avenue Street improvement from Ninth Street to Eleventh Street. The bid results will be available to the public after the council awards the contract to the lowest responsible bidder. The lowest bid is from Ideal Landscape and Design Inc. at $4,247,110.50. Steph recommends the council award a contract to the lowest response, responsible bidder. Exhibit one is a letter from Bolton and Mink drafted by Travis Winter here. Recommendation letter to award a contract to the lowest bidder, Ideal Landscape.
Elena.
What was the engineer's estimate for this project?
So it came a little higher than we estimated.
It was about 7% over the estimate, is that what?
Was there more than one bidder?
We received three bids, yes.
Questions?
I'd move to award the contract to Ideal Landscape and Design Inc. for the $4,247,110.50.
Okay, we have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Chad?
Do we have all of our typicals in there, timelines, anything like that? What is, what is set on those? Travis? Just so, I mean, we're working a big project, we're going to do a big thing in town, just so people kind of know timelines and thought process of this.
Yep, so this project is broken into two phases. Third Avenue is going to be constructed in 2024, Fourth Avenue in 2025. They'll begin construction in May and be wrapped up before King Turkey Day. So that's kind of our timeline we're working with, is trying to limit the disturbance to being outside of that busy time for the downtown area.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Onto number two.
Another thing about Third and Fourth Avenue, International Festival will be located at the
Selwood Beach.
Selwood Beach instead of the, in front of the courthouse this year because of this, this project. Second item, public meeting notice for review of storm water pollution prevention plan. The city of Worthington is a regulated city under Phase Two of the federal program to reduce pollution from municipal separate, separate storm sewer system, MS4. Regulated cities need to be covered under a statewide NPTES permit. Permit required include, permit requirements include implementation of storm water pollution prevention plan, SWIP, which is include to, which is to include the following six mandatory minimum control measures: public education and outreach, public involvement and participation, illicit discharge detection and elimination, construction site storm water runoff control, post-construction storm water management and pollution prevention, and good housekeeping for municipal operations. It is also required that the city conduct, conduct an annual public meeting to allow commit, comment on the city's SWIP. It is proposed that the public meeting be set for the regular council meeting of the regular council, city meet, no. That word is weird. Regular council meeting of May 13, 2024. Sorry, wording is weird. Steph recommends that the council authorize publishing the following notice not less than 30 days in advance of, of the public meeting. It's the one that we had, same thing we had last year. Steven Schneider gave the presentation. This year will be me.
We do it every year.
Yep.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Number three.
Third item, approved task order 26 with Bolton and Mink to provide professional service for Third and Fourth Avenue construction supervision. The contract for the reconstruction of Third and Fourth Avenue is awarded today. The need for the consulting engineering services planned as part of the project due to the complex nature of project and the current workload scheduled this construction season. Worthington currently has a master agreement for professional service dated September 14, 2020. Task order 26 is proposed at cost estimated at $425,000. Exhibit two is task order number 26 with Bolton and Mink, Inc. to provide construction supervision service for the Third and Fourth Avenue Street reconstruction and utility over two construction seasons in the amount estimated at $425,000. Steph recommends approval of task order number 26.
Questions, anyone? Oh, Chad?
Will you and engineering staff still be able to, I mean, you'll have full say and walk of the project on days when they're not available and things like that too, so it's not just going to be a complete handoff?
Correct, yep.
Okay. So we need a motion? Okay.
Second.
And a seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have development.
All right, good evening. So I just want item here, and this is a text amendment to City Code, Chapter 155, Appendix E Table 5. This is the text amendment that council took no action on at the last meeting here. Just to recap here, so this text amendment is being requested by the Curran Baptist Church. They're seeking to allow ultimately a cemetery and property that's zone B3 general business district. And working with them, we tailored it down to requesting it by conditional use on B3 zone properties instead of just outright permitted. It did receive a favorable vote from our planning commission at their March 12th meeting as well. At the last meeting, there were several questions and things raised, so I included some more information mainly that you can see at the end there. One thing, I guess three things I'd want to address. One is that, yes, any private party that's subject to zoning regulations can apply for, to change those. It's not usually recommended, but it is allowable under state law. That by no means means that you need to approve that at all, but it is a right that they have, so it's not, you know, completely out of the ordinary here. The second thing, this is more looking at the zoning districts, so Exhibit 2A shows all the properties in town that are zone TZ transition zone. These would be areas that cemeteries are permitted with no special approvals needed, no conditional use permit. If you showed up and said, I'm establishing a cemetery, we'd make sure you met all the state laws and whatever else, and they'd be running with it. Exhibit 2B shows areas where cemeteries are allowed by conditional use only. So this would be areas that are zoned R2, R4, R7, and M1, although there's actually no properties in town that are zoned R7. Those areas would be properties that you'd be allowed to apply for conditional use permit on and seek approval for a cemetery. And then Exhibit 2C shows all the properties in town that are zone B3 general business district, so primarily these are your major commercial corridors and then kind of a few other one-off areas. Upon application from the church, staff did have some concerns regarding a specific state statute that said, this isn't the entire thing, but any private person, any religious corporation may establish a cemetery on the persons or corporations own land in the following manner, and then it goes on. It seems pretty straightforward, so we saw some legal advice on how that interacts with our local zoning requirements. Turns out it's not a problem for us here, but that research did take some time and resulted in the city taking a 60-day extension on the application. So if you recall with zoning applications, you have 60 days to make a decision on that application. If the circumstance is warranted, you can take a 60-day extension. While our legal counsel is doing some research on that statute, we did have to take our 60-day extension. That means the final deadline is fast approaching, and you will need to make a decision on this tonight. And then once again, the proposed ordinance is shown in Exhibit 2E. And I suppose the other piece I'd want to reiterate is that approval of this text amendment doesn't approve a cemetery on any land that's zone B3. It just means that you're giving any property that's zone B3 the ability to apply for a conditional use permit, and then you could very well deny every single one that comes up out of that, but it would, it would at least give you the opportunity to look at each request more specifically, so. With that, I'll take any questions.
How big is their total property?
The total property, at least what they own, that's not really up for discussion. We're talking about the text amendment. Just with this text amendment, it would apply to everything that's zone B3. The specific property, the size, whatever conditions exist, surroundings on that, that would be something you could discuss if you allow it to move to a conditional use request, so.
Thank you.
Just to be fair to them, I don't want to
Yep.
This basically just gives them the option to be able to come and try to get that conditional use permit. So kind of hearing it the second time, I guess I'm a little
Yeah, and I hope what you saw out of, at least Exhibit 2B, is that there's a lot of areas in town already that you could technically apply for a conditional use permit for. Most of them are built out, and you'd probably never see that request, but it's already there. A lot of areas, might have even been surprising to some of you how many areas you could request a cemetery on. It's, it's not a typical request, of course, to establish a new cemetery. This might be the only request you ever see in your life here, so. Any other questions?
Anyone else have anything? Yeah, that looks like there's places that are just all over town, actually, that.
Matt, the way you explain this, we're running out of the, closing in on the 60-day extension timeline, so
Yeah, that's correct.
must take action, either
Approve it or deny it.
Or deny it.
Yep.
Well, this is just one of the steps, and as outlined, thank you for that. There are many areas that already fall in there. This is just allowing the opportunity for requests, but not approving any of it, and it gives us more time, more research, more feedback time, should they apply, which I would assume that probably is going to happen at some point, but we don't know when. I don't know why we would make the ultimate decision today based on that, because I don't think we're even close to having any or all of the, any, let alone all of the facts to decide on any one property that's brought up, even in this. So I would move to approve the text amendment, at least giving them the opportunity to apply for the conditional use permit.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Yep, Chris?
I think if you pass the, the conditional use permit option in a, in a B3 or any, what are, any B-zone, you open up, it's more difficult to deny a conditional use permit a pretty in-depth justification of denial when it, when it comes to, when it comes to a conditional use application. There, it, it really clears the way, if you approve a conditional use permit in a, in a zone that hasn't been, that where it hasn't been an option before for it to, to fast-track into approval. I don't know that I'd ever want the possibility of a cemetery in any business zone that we And so I'm not for this.
Amy?
I'm concerned, similar to what you said, that our hands will be tied. We won't really have a legitimate choice, yes or no, on this situation.
You had kind of made the comment that we could theoretically say no to everything going forward. Is that, I mean, are these concerns pretty valid, that it'd be really hard to challenge them?
I think in a lot of cases, yes, but, you know, I, I think there's a greater maybe level of consideration to something like a cemetery than a lot of other conditional use requests that come up as well, but I, I think it's a valid concern, certainly. Yeah.
There's probably a lot of other zones that are not worthy of a cemetery that are rated conditional use as well. What do we do with those? Do we take them away? You know, because not knowing where this is going to be located at either. Yes, Chad?
I get it. I, I completely get it, and I, I somewhat agree, but the fact is, we have cemeteries in people's backyards.
That's not, that's not what we want to promote, though.
Why?
There comes a lot of regulations when there's a, someone buried in a, in a, on an acreage or on a yard. It causes issues when people want to sell their land or.
No, that, but that's what I'm saying. We have residential areas abutted right next to neighborhoods that have a cemetery right in their backyards.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Here in the community already.
Sorry, I misinterpreted what you said.
I'm not talking about letting anybody bury anybody in their backyard.
Yeah, that's what I.
Whoa. That's, yeah, whoa, nope, not talking that. I'm just saying there are, we already have cemeteries right up to residential neighborhoods. We have cemeteries where there are businesses at next-door properties right now. They're on the edges of town. If you look at the Catholic Cemetery, there was a tiling business right next to it. Yes, there is some separation between that and, and another. We have apartment complexes in residential neighborhoods, the Worthington Cemetery. I, I get it. I, I don't think it's ideal, but I don't know that a cemetery, the, if it's the stigma of a cemetery, it's a place of rest. It's not a place of disturbance. I, I don't know that we've had any altercations or incidents of anything that would disrupt business at any of the current cemeteries we have, to where I think that this is something that if someone wants to apply for it, and then they show that their property isn't very big compared to what they're going to have on it, that, okay, then we can put some conditionals to it, or whatever that may come in that instance, but we haven't had any instance other than to say they want to know if there's an option.
I have a question.
Yep, Amy?
The, the other thing that comes to my mind is, right now, we're subsidizing the city and the county are subsidizing the care and maintenance of our public cemetery. If whatever reason down the road, this one was abandoned, we would, I believe, feel obligated to do the same. Is that something we want to potentially take on?
That's a very good one there, that, I mean, that I agree with you completely on that. Look at many townships throughout.
Right.
County that are having to take care of that.
And I would, I would agree with you, and I would agree with Chad both on that. I think that would be a really big discussion topic if you let this move to a conditional use permit, at which point you could look at, okay, that's a very permanent land use. Do they have the ability to maintain it forever? You know, is it, is it something like a Catholic church that's probably going to be around for a very long time because they've got a larger organization? Or is there a risk that you could end up, you know, having to step in and take it over? I, there's going to be a lot more considerations if you let it get to a conditional use permit, as you're going to be looking at proximity to underground stuff, compliance with state's laws, things like that. I, there's a lot, a lot more consideration that would need to be given to something that's a lot more of a permanent land use. You know, you get a conditional use permit for something like an auto repair shop, we'll give it 10 years, it may or may not be an auto repair shop, but a cemetery is going to be a cemetery, so.
Forever.
But I, I think those are kind of the considerations that would need to come at the point of a conditional use permit, and also things like looking at what's the, what's around it? What are the plans for around there? If you let a cemetery be there, is that, are you killing property values next door? I mean, are you hurting development next door?
Do we have the authority to say no to that without, I mean, a lot of times, we don't really have a choice. Do we have the authority to say yes or no?
I think you do, absolutely, if the circumstances warrant it, yeah.
What, what are the, what are the considerations or reasons for denial of a conditional use permit that first come before the planning commission? And then are those the same options of, or reasons for denial that come before the city council?
Yeah, I, I would think there'd be probably a number of things you could look at. You'd be looking at what's directly around it, what your future goals are for the area, proximity to utilities, just all sorts of things like that. I, I think there'd certainly be some good reasons, especially in a lot of properties that you could say no to a conditional use permit, and that's always your right to say I, I understand that there's certainly some fear to denying conditional use permits sometimes as they're typically seen as, you know, you should kind of just allow them with whatever conditions are appropriate, but they do exist because there are sometimes cases where it's not appropriate and you should deny it, so.
Steve, you have some?
If this came before council, I would advise them and caution them that under state law, the local authority is ultimately responsible for an abandoned cemetery. The discussions that I previously had with the Nobles County Administrator regarding the Worthington Cemetery was, we had a spirited debate whether, over which of the local authorities was responsible for that cemetery, whether it would be the city of Worthington or Nobles County, and state law doesn't clearly define that, given that there are many cemeteries in Nobles County, but outside of the city of Worthington, we kind of said if that situation ever arose, the city would probably feel obligated to take over perpetual care of the Worthington cemeteries while the county would be responsible for the many smaller cemeteries that are outside of the city of Worthington. So my advice, if this came up, would be that there would be a perpetual care plan that would provide financial wherewithal to maintain a new cemetery for many, many years. And if they were unable to do that, I would caution the council about approving a cemetery that didn't have the financial wherewithal to, to provide for it, because the city and the taxpayers could ultimately be responsible for the, for the care and upkeep.
And that would fall under the conditional use permit.
Correct.
So we, we did have a motion and.
Yep. A motion is seconded, right? Or do we? Yeah.
Yes. So any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we have three opposed and, okay. There's a no.
All right. Thank you all.
Okay, we're going to go on to council committee reports. I have nothing.
I have nothing.
Amy?
No report.
Chris?
Let's see. Had auditorium advisory board, they've been, I think they've been having some plaster issues, but more plaster issues showing up that they're looking at needing to be addressed. And then had gone country this last weekend, and this next weekend, another big one, Wild Angels and Handsome Devils this Saturday. Also want to invite everybody to the legislative update coffee breakfast at the Fire Hall with our local legislators, state legislators. That's a Saturday morning at 8:00 AM, I think.
Eight o'clock.
8:00 AM. That's all I have.
Okay. Elena?
Let's go to Chad.
I have nothing.
Okay, all right. Elena?
Okay, um, first, we did have a Nobles County childcare meeting this morning, and again, they kind of brought up a few of the different properties that we've already discussed over time. Most of them are outside of city limits. I'd say the newest one that's closest to Worthington is the Nobles County Electric Building, and they are currently trying to get a deed grant for $300,000. So they're still working on plan layouts. The plan there would be to have that special family childcare, the POD model, and to operate several of them within the building. That is, I think, it for that. For the YMCA board, they have their kids camp open for enrollment for Y members currently. I believe it goes open to the public on April 15th for all other students, and they start with the kids that are going into kindergarten, and this is all daycare, I think it's 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And we'd had some discussions on whether there would be a little bit of leeway at the end of the day for pickups for people that do maybe work until 5:00 PM, but those signups are available online, or I believe you can go to the Y as well for that. I also saw that Waterworld season passes are now on sale, so you can get them at the Y. Will they also be available anywhere else, just at the Y?
Just the YMCA.
Okay, perfect. Yep, so that's where they are available. And then one other thing is, as many of you are aware.
So Elena submitted her resignation from council effective April 11th, and I just want to say on behalf of staff, she's, it's been such a pleasure working with, with her and as dedicated and hardworking that she has been and working hard for her constituents. We've, we probably interact individually more with the individual council members than you may together. So I have a lot of interaction. I know those that, that work hard and take this, this responsibility very seriously. I'm going to miss working with Elena. She, she served her constituents very well, and it has been an honor to work for you. Thank you. If you want to.
I had just put a couple of little things on here that just kind of outline my timeline. So in April of 2021 is when I was appointed. I ran in the November 2022 general election, and I ended up winning by a narrow margin to a few other really excellent candidates as well. Since that date, I tried to estimate how many meetings I've had that have at least been on-the-book meetings, and my best guess was I've made it to 45 regular council meetings. In the ballpark of 250 official meetings consisting of special council meetings, council subcommittee meetings, other committee meetings where I sat alongside residents of Worthington or members of other entities. So I think a lot of people don't realize the amount of time that goes into those things. I also got to go to Quero, Texas for Turkey Fest, and so that was a lot of fun, but overall, it's been a really great experience. Um, yeah, we're moving outside of city limits, and that's what prompted this change, so thank you.
We've enjoyed having you on council for sure, so thank you for what, thank you for serving.
Chad? It's been especially neat for me. I have known Elena since she was just a little tyke, and to see her as a little kid, growing up, going to college, being friends with her parents and family, and, and then, and then seeing the progression and the involvement and the in-depth involvement, it really came clear when we went through the process of the appointment. In that situation, you know, there was two full years to fill a vacant seat when Mike passed away, and we took a lot of time and process and letters and interviews, and to really see someone take as much interest and understand that when many people don't and they think we come to a meeting or to a month to do this, that there's a lot more that goes into it in separate meetings and discussions and the in-depth stuff that you go through instead of just sitting here listening to a presentation, and not to cut staff any slack on that, they're at those meetings too, but when you're at a council meeting and people hear a presentation from engineering or parks or community development, you get to hear about a three to five-minute briefing of overview of what has been done, but those of us on the council and staff sit through much more than that, and a lot of people don't get that. Elena did get it, and Dougie and Hard, and I think there were some great decisions, and it's been really cool to see you progress and grow as a wonderful woman, and I think it's pretty awesome that you got to live it out, and you'll have fun on the farm.
Chicken.
Chicken.
Anybody else have anything? I only got to work with you for a little over a year anyways, but associated through Quinn and the Fire Department and stuff, it made my job easier as well.
There are elective positions within the county. Don't forget that. Okay, so we have several housekeeping things that we're going to have to work through. With Elena resigning officially on April 11th, the vacancy has to be called. We have to schedule a special election. There are more than two years remaining on her term, so the seat has to be filled by a special election. Staff's recommendation, we'll, we'll have an upcoming council meeting in which by resolution, or is it by ordinance? By resolution, we'll declare a vacancy and call for a special election. Staff's recommendation is to schedule a special election at the November 5th general election, and, which means that an interim council member needs to be appointed to serve until that special election is held and that the winner of that election is canvassed, you know, a couple of days afterwards. That seat then would be filled from that November date until January 2nd of 2027. So the previous time, when Elena was initially appointed, there was more time left on that term, or no, there was less time, I'm sorry, but it was just short of two years left on that term, so council at that time elected to go through a very strenuous process to find an appointment and took applications and letters and did interviews. This interim council member would serve for about six months. So our recommendation is to come forward with recommendations and make an appointment at an upcoming meeting and just make the appointment. We don't really have the time or the wherewithal or the staff to work through a lengthy process, especially since I personally can't be involved in, in any of it. So that's going to be our recommendation. of it. So that's going to be our recommendation moving forward. You, of course, council, will decide exactly how they want to fill that interim seat.
Chad?
When can we do the special election, or excuse me, the special meeting to discuss this? And the reason I ask is because with the resignation, I am not going to be at the last meeting in April. So that would leave us with three, which is just the quorum in case anything were to happen, anybody got sick or anything like that. Is that something we could have a special meeting prior to that?
Council could schedule a special meeting and make the appointment at that meeting. We just need to give three days posted notice of a meeting.
We have to approve the resolution as well. We have to approve the resolution of that meeting as well.
Which, and we need to get the resolution approved by legal counsel, so...
Does, I mean, is there anything next week that would work? Wednesday, the 17th? We have a Parks meeting at 4:00.
How long is that typically?
It shouldn't be more than an hour.
So we can do it 5:00 o'clock?
I'm fine with that. Does that work for you? Larry?
Yeah.
Wednesday?
Wednesday at 5:00.
Is it fine with you, Mindy, Steve? Just because I leave...
I won't attend.
Okay. Well, but if we have a...
I'm not going to attend any meeting that you may schedule or you may nominate at a...
Do you have to be at the meeting when we declare a vacancy legally?
No, that's just passing the resolution.
So are you okay with a Wednesday meeting? Rick?
Yes.
Do we need to make a motion in that, or do we just...
I...
We would have to at 5:00 to be after the Parks meeting.
5:00, okay.
Is that...
Ready with everyone?
Yep. Thank you. I'm asking that because, yeah, I won't be around. Say, we need to make a motion for...no.
No.
It's a special...
We will get the resolution finalized. We probably have a draft kind of put together.
And the thing we need to remember as we go into this is, as you talk to people and find out, it's a Ward 2 seat.
Yeah, just the...and I put that in the email that went out last week, but you can appoint a qualified resident of Ward 2 that would serve until around November 7th. The date that the county canvases the vote isn't our decision, but it's generally two days after the election. So a qualified candidate is a person that's eligible to vote in Minnesota, have to be 21 years or more of age, and must have maintained a residence in the district or in that Ward 2 for at least 30 days before the appointment. So those are the three qualifiers for someone that is eligible to be appointed.
Should we be talking to people? I mean, how does...because they wouldn't have to say yes.
Well, if you plan to nominate someone, they should be...
In the loop.
They should be someone that has...is willing to accept the appointment.
And knows about it.
Huh?
And knows about it.
And, yeah.
Understands the depth of meetings and things of that sort.
Yeah, so if you want to...
Six, yeah, six to seven-month appointment.
Dealers out there?
Bring forward a nominee.
From Ward 2 as well.
Huh?
It's going to be from Ward 2.
Just Ward 2.
Just Ward 2.
Yeah. And after, now that it's public, maybe people will reach out to...
Yes.
To you.
Yeah. Anybody's interested, please let us know.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
No.
All right, thanks, Elena.
You want the last one?
That's all I have, sir.
Last, right?
Yeah.
Take it from Chris.
Yeah, move to close.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, save and sign. Motion carried.